Before this, you're going to be acting secretary?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if that's the proper page you're going to be on.
Yeah, whatever.
Keep track.
I move that we accept the minutes from our previous meeting in January.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got that taken care of. That's this. First people on the agenda, I don't see them here at all. Joseph Ferreira Family Trust. Oh, okay.
Yeah, Joe will be able to meet us today.
All right, where's your new plan?
Right here.
Slide down all the way down.
Okay.
Marty?
Yep.
You want to, Charlie's down here, I can drag you up a chair if you want to sit around this side.
I can sit right down here.
Okay. I can offer you something later.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Rod Davis from Inside Engineering, here tonight representing Joe Ferreira and the Ferma Family under partnership. Unfortunately, he can't be with us tonight, he's stuck up in Boston for a governor's council meeting. But I'd like to talk about what we did at the last meeting. We gave a presentation about the delineation that was done by our botanist Brandon Fenoff, Wetland Resources and Green, showing the plan here with an upland area shown in the center here. It was required that we cross through the wetland and prepare a replication area in order to access the double portion of the site. At the last meeting, you requested that Marta go out and take a look at the delineation of the wetland's boundary and resource areas. That was done, and she provided us a letter dated December 13th that described her findings on the site. Follow-up on that, we had a site meeting that was conducted on December 27th with Marta, our botanist Brandon Fenoff, Mr. Fernet attended, as well as Joe Ferreira, the owner and applicant, and myself, Rod Davis. To discuss first the delineation issues, there were concerns about two specific wetland flags right here in the area of Wetland Flag B5, and back here in the order of Wetland Flag B19. It was discussed in the field between Brandon and Marta, no change was required for B5. And at B19, it was conceded that we would move Wetland Flag 10 feet inward from that location, and that's as shown on the plan. In addition, there was an intermittent stream that's adjacent to Flag B15 to B13 over on the left side of the wetland boundary, that's been added. And most importantly, there was a potential vernal pool that was located up in this area here. There's actually two vernal pools that were discussed in Marta's letter. One was this area here, which we had flagged in the field, it was discussed at the site meeting, and it does correspond to a potential vernal pool that was shown on Mass GIS. That's been scaled and shown here, as well as the wetland flags that were set in the field. In addition, there was a hydraulic connection to a flat area over in this region here that was looked at by Brandon and Marta, and as I understand, it was agreed that that would not qualify as a vernal pool. The vernal pool area here, I've provided buffer zones for the 100-foot offset from the vernal pool boundary, 125 feet, and 150 feet, three buffer zones. The 150-foot being no structures within 150 feet is, I believe, the way it's interpreted in Dayton. We've provided modification to the layout of the house site, so that the house is no, will not go into, penetrate into the 150-foot offset from that potential vernal pool, as well as 100, or excuse me, the 50-foot offset of buffer zone from the BBW flag. We also relocated the well, so that it could be outside the 25-foot setback. The well's actually dimensioned at 36 feet back from the area of Wetland Flag B22. And we provided a little extra measure for siltation prevention, the second row of hay bales here, as well as the stilling basin we've moved over into this area, again, more than 25 feet away from the site. There were comments in Marta's letter regarding the replication area. Replication area has been modified up in this area here in accordance with the DEP's recommendations for replication guidelines. We've added three more red maple trees in this area, three additional high bush blueberry shrubs, and four more winter berry shrubs, which will accommodate the 10 to 15 feet on center between trees, and the 8 to 10 foot on center for shrubs per the guideline. Other comments were concern over flooding of the driveway. We have done some slight regrading of the driveway, and in order to have a culvert crossing, an equalizer culvert in this area here, it's been added. Also a detail, it's on the second detail sheet for the culvert crossing. Another comment was the power feed to the property, to the house, and we show an overhead wire with utility poles that's been added, coming in adjacent to the driveway, also with a cross-section as requested here, on second sheet. Let's see, there was also a question about the, oh yes, the heating the site, we've added a note over here at the house that it should be heated by oil or propane without the need to access with a gas line from the street. I believe that covers it, but I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Jim? Everything that you just covered, is it right in this area here, or do you have a separate sheet on it? You were reading a lot from your texts there.
I have a letter, if you'd like, if you'd like a copy of the letter for the record?
Yes, please.
Certainly.
Okay, and then the sort, okay. Marty?
Well, I think that, well, I don't know if the commission has seen this plan before tonight?
No.
Okay.
I have not.
I know, it looks like the revisions were made January 5th, and it's kind of too bad you didn't get the plan before the 5th. You could have taken a look at it and commented on it. One of the items that I, relative to the flagging around that vernal pool, in the field, the flags were not accurate, so I don't know what, are those flags, the flags over in the field?
Those are the flags over in the field.
Okay, because at the onsite, there was actually at least one or two of the flags were actually hanging over water.
I think that was in this area over here, and actually it was, Brandon did mention that to me, that was one area, there was some water standing at the time of the December 27th site visit, but it's inconsequential in this area here. Another 4 or 4 feet of a shift should not be an impact on the house placement.
Well, I think that's something that someone should go out and check in the field, to see if it's inconsequential.
Right now, most vernal pools are even dry. There, I have four behind my house, and there isn't a stitch of water in any of them. And so if this is carrying water now, it's probably going to expand much more for a high watermark, and...
Jim, I was in there.
Yeah.
They're at their peak right now, with water.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were at the onsite, that was full of water, and it was actually, the flag, it was beyond, the limit of water was actually beyond the flags at that point.
Okay, all right. No, I'm just looking at what's in my neighborhood, and they're just, they're dry.
Yeah, so...
It's a neighborhood thing.
The other thing I've noticed is the wire, the overhead wire goes through the wetland. I mean, I would assume there may be some tree trimming, cutting for the wire.
Be honest with you, Marta, that's going to be driven by National Grid. We've got no control, but National Grid's going to want replacement of the poles. I think that the point was that we wanted it to be adjacent to the proposed driveway, so that they wouldn't have the poles in the middle of the wetlands, that's one thing that we can translate to.
Right, right.
Now, if they were just to bring it up on the side, and then cut across the driveway, you wouldn't, it wouldn't go over anything?
I'm just saying there could be additional wetland alteration at that point. I mean, it appears that they've done a lot of work since the last meeting, and unfortunately the plans to get, you know, sent to the commission or myself, it looks like they were done a month ago. So I mean, I would like to be able to take a look at this plan before you close the hearing.
Okay, that's...
That's what we'll do.
Okay, and would you, would you check, oh, you don't even have the vernal pool on this?
No, I don't, this is my old plan, and, you know, I'd like to take a look at the location of that pool.
We got this one here, yeah. Now, that's your, that's your new plan. And, okay.
On the site.
And so if we continue this until, was it March 8?
March 8.
March 8. And by that time, we will have, okay?
Thanks.
You know, I mean, other than that, everything does look like you, you know, you've covered your bases in most categories.
The other point too, I'm sorry, there were two areas that we identified as potential vernal pool. The one that was stated as, you know, I agree, that wasn't a vernal pool, that's really not what we talked about, what I said in the field was, it looks like it might dry up, and may not be a vernal pool, but that was one of the areas that was going to be monitored in the spring.
Right.
So I wouldn't necessarily concede that at this point. You know, it may meet by law definition, I mean, it does hold water, there's probably water there now, you know, but, so...
Okay.
I think that that should be...
And where are bolts, is that in there?
That actually is...
This is, this is the new map here?
This is the new map. There's actually a, there's actually, there's a hydraulic connection between the two that doesn't show, oh, here it is, is this it?
Okay, if that...
It's in here, then hydraulic connection doesn't show, there's actually, you know, they're connected to each other.
Okay, because that might have ramifications because, because of the structure and our bylaw setback.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that one's going to be looked at this spring, that was what was discussed on the site, was that Brandon or someone was going to look at those two areas to determine whether or not, in fact, they were vernal pools.
Okay, well, after this coming week, there should be enough precipitation to determine what is and what isn't, because we got a lot of precipitation coming tomorrow, more Friday, Saturday, Sunday, next Wednesday. Okay.
Well, that's not consistent with what I got from Brandon. Brandon told me that you guys had discussed it, you went over with Brandon, you were doing your kibbutz, which was fine, I stayed at it, but he came back and explained to me that it was not qualifying as a vernal pool.
No.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. When you tail off like that, the last part of your...
Our botanist, Brandon Fenoff, what he relayed to me, and again, I wasn't there, I didn't hear it, but what was relayed to me was that this vernal pool, yep, yep, this qualifies, but the second area, in this area over here, did not qualify. That's what I heard from Brandon. So maybe Brandon needs to talk to you about it, and come to some terms, and I...
That's what I heard him say, too.
What?
I heard him, that's what I heard him say.
On the site?
Yeah.
What I said on the site was, it looked like, it looked like it probably didn't hold water long enough to be a vernal pool, but it wasn't during the season you look at.
Okay, Marty is our consultant.
Pardon me?
She's our consultant, you know, and I did hear Brandon voice the same opinion that you just gave.
Well, let us continue it until March 8.
Wait, wait, Jim.
Okay.
What difference does it make whether that...
It would be a different setback.
Makes, yeah, it would make a big difference.
It's just that the other area, that might or might not be a vernal pool.
Isn't it further away from the whole site itself?
It is... It is, oh, let's fix it, listen, it's right. It is on the north side of the wetland boundary, at B19 where the well was, the well was going to be dug, it was just inside that area right there, and it's actually hydrologically connected to the, to the vernal pool that's shown on that plan.
Right.
What was discussed with Brandon was, I didn't feel that it would likely hold water long enough to be a vernal pool.
Right.
But we were going to monitor in the spring.
Okay, so if we hold up another month, that would be sufficient time to monitor?
Well, I think that before the meeting on March 7, 8, we can take a look at it, see if it has water in it, how much.
All right, okay, so let's aim at concluding this on March 8th then, so if we continue until then, and we'll look for a closure at that time. Okay, I move that we continue the hearing until March 8?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, you're good. Marty, you got that one?
Yeah.
Marty, you keep that one.
I'll pull that over. Actually, the other map, there's another map in that folder we can, we should probably discard.
March 8, is it?
March 8. This goes in with it. Okay, where's the folder?
Right here.
Yeah.
Madison Holmes.
Yes, Steve Gilbass, FT and Gearing with the applicant, Steve Baber, Madison Holmes.
Slow down.
Okay.
Our ears are getting older.
We opened the hearing last, last month.
Yeah.
And we proposed a notice of intent, basically meeting all your minimum requirements of the Conservation Commission. Mr. Digits, after looking at the plan, had an idea that had merit, he was wondering if we could possibly take the driveway and move it on the other side of the wall, so the wall could act as a natural buffer. I thought it was a decent idea, and I didn't think it was a problem, so I thought that's something that we probably could do, and that we're going to come back this meeting with a new plan. After speaking with the applicant, I was not privy to his agreement on the purchase of land, I've got a copy that I'll give you folks, but the buyer herein agrees that clearing on the acquired lot will be limited to the amount of clearing needed to install the septic system, and that all remaining trees and vegetation will remain in natural state. The intent of this restriction is to leave a natural buffer between the properties of both the seller and the buyer. Unfortunately, I wasn't aware of that agreement. That being said, he's under the obligation to not clear anything on the other side of the wall, except what regards the septic system. And again, we meet all your requirements.
Yep.
And actually, at that part, coming in along that ILSF, we're actually 40 feet from the wetlands there. We're in the back, where the drive goes towards the ground, it's more like 32 feet, so, you know, we've got more than enough, and I didn't think it was a bad idea at the time, but I didn't realize they had this agreement, so, unfortunately.
All right, so we gave it a shot.
No, it wasn't, I thought it was a decent idea, Jim.
Okay, and that was the, that was the only situation that we had?
Right, everybody else was fine with it.
Okay.
And even Charlie did mention they met all the requirements.
Yeah, no, I know, I just, I'm just looking at it, I says, gee, that would be a nice natural barrier, it would reduce that siltation on that side, all that. Okay, what's your pleasure?
It's fine with me.
All right. Well, the motion?
Motion to accept the point.
And issue an honor of conditions?
Issue an honor of condition.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
You're done.
Go fast.
Okay, approved.
Put the copy of that.
Okay. Shall we come back to that one, number three, to the end, we'll take deal with society first?
Yes. Okay, I'm Ken Pacheco, I'm representing the Dynastor Society. We had it marked out, I believe it was your request, and I believe, Jim, you've actually taken a look at the...
Oh, I've been there a couple times, peeking in the windows, and I saw my grandmother's chair.
Was that right?
No. Okay, Tom, on the, would you grade, okay, as you go east, it does develop some dampness down on that side, whether it's, you know, as you get closer to that, to the wetland area, would you grade it to the point where you're not going to leave it high and then just to drop on, it's just going to be grading along the contour of the road?
How to end the parking lot would probably be tapered with either the natural rock or riprap itself, and the natural, because of the property itself, natural rock, you better, you know, the round rock.
Yeah. Would you put a, you said you could put rock on the, on the edge, or are you going to put those...
The parking lot itself would be tapered gradually that way anyways.
Yeah.
So the difference is probably going to be roughly 18 inches anyway, so it's not that much to taper down with a road rock.
I'm trying to think what you did down on Somerset Ave, 138, you put some kind of a barrier so the cars wouldn't go beyond the utility poles, or some kind of...
Oh, I see.
Cement lip, or something there, you know, a little, something a little raised.
We could put a row of large rock, if that, you're talking about a buffer to stop vehicles from going in there?
Yeah.
Yes, we could put a physical barrier there.
Well, I mean, I, you don't want it to be huge, it's just something that, and yet you don't want it to be something that, that when it gets plowed, it gets pushed all over the place either.
You could consider, we got a bunch of three-foot rock on Leepo Street from other projects, that probably would be fitting there.
Yeah, just scattered, just...
Right, just enough that you can't get by.
Single cask.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be decorative as well as utilitarian.
Yep. So you're, and you're talking about considering that 50-foot square?
Yeah.
I'm good with it, I've looked at it, it's a good project.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that we issue a negative, this is, this is an RDA, right?
Yes.
A negative determination for the project?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good project.
Tom, see, I was down on Lincoln Avenue, you made me nervous there for a couple of days.
Yes.
Does, does the, does Dayton Industries have that cover over their sister-in-law yet?
No, I haven't been there for about a month, they, I last met with the building commissioner there, with the company that was going to do the work.
Okay.
I don't know where they are on that.
Oh, sorry, it's Jim that's...
Correct.
Not you, okay, sorry.
I was there, part of the visit.
Okay.
I don't know if that's finished or not yet, it should be.
Well, everything but, everything but the cover?
Right.
Okay, all right, no, I, I just, it was Jim I should have asked, not you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Safe.
Sounds from the no-show.
Okay.
We continue with that, Jim?
Well, wait a minute, we got a certificate.
No, that's done.
We said...
Do you need Tom's though?
Tom!
Tommy!
What are you doing?
We got a number five.
I should have turned the page and looked.
Certificate of compliance for Hot Street.
Oh, you had that tonight? Oh, good. I didn't know that was tonight.
Well, glad I can, we can turn the page and...
Yeah, I didn't turn the page. Well, what the hell are we talking about here? On Hot Street, where on Hot Street?
I did an NOI, I believe it was 2012, at a culvert under the railroad bed, south of the landfill.
South of the landfill?
Yes, they, they used to be...
South of the old landfill.
There used to be a culvert under the landfill that was compromised, and it had water pounding on Pleasant Street, so we had to install that pipe under the railroad bed.
Okay.
It must have just been filed, and I forgot about asking for the certificate of compliance that project's been finished.
Okay, all right.
We had GTA.
Actually, it's been a while.
Right, that was all engineered and everything.
Okay. Yeah, I've been by there, I know that it's our functioning, so I move that we issue a certificate of compliance to the highway department for the project?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Have a good night again.
You too.
What do we got on here, Jim?
Turn the page again, or?
No, that's it, almost finished.
Almost, no. An RDA from Carly Stonestreet. 16, 1216 Wetland Street, Dayton, I've been there.
Okay.
DEP's been there. We have all this stuff here.
Okay, so there's no wetlands, if, well, tell us about...
Wetlands have been flagged by Brandon.
There's not going to, it's a, what, a walking trail?
Oh, yeah.
Not, not, not a vehicle trail?
No. No. And it's out of the wetlands, but there was a lot of controversy about it, and everybody thought he was going to build homes, obviously, he's not going to build any homes back behind his law, but DEP's visited the site, they said that he ought to file an RDA, but before he filed the RDA, he had to have it flagged, so he knew where the wetlands were, where he should stay away from.
Okay.
Everything's been done. He's complied with all the laws.
Wait, DEP issued an enforcement order, you said?
Yes.
On here?
Yeah. I have it right here.
Okay, so they have to lift the enforcement order, DEP?
Well, DEP was there, and they said, all they wanted him to do was to have the wetlands flagged and have him file an RDA. They file an RDA, DEP gets a copy, they've got a copy, we have a receipt that they got a copy.
Okay, so, so if we, so if we issue a negative determination, then DEP will lift the enforcement order? That they have, or if he's complied?
Yeah, he's complied.
Okay. I move that we issue a negative determination for the... Um, I move that we issue a negative determination, uh, for the, uh, property of Carl's, uh, Stonestrom on William Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Okay, we got two more things here to go. Okay. Wow, we're clicking. Uh, two more.
This is an RDA. Oh, this is the historical society.
Okay. We have to approve Charlie Conservation Clark.
Right, highways, certificate of compliance?
Yep.
Done. Now.
This with Charlie? We need to.
Yeah, that's just for the, the capable people. Hmm, Jesus, getting worse and worse and worse. I'm confused a little bit about this, Jim, do you know anything about what this is about?
Let me see. Okay, okay, so if we approve tonight's RDAs, we sign? So, and NOI, okay, this is the, the NOI was the house?
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't approve that, so we've got.
Continue.
We got, um, let's see, we're in determination of applicability, okay, we got, how many determinations? One, two, we got two determinations.
And order of conditions on Madison.
Okay, so we wanna, uh, sign this for Charlie, so that, um, we should do two of these. Oh, let, let me, um, run, let's see. If you approve. And he, he can do it. Okay, let me, let me make, we, we have to extras here. We did, um.
He always puts two sheets in case you make a mistake.
No, we got, uh, we need a, an order of conditions, um, we approved, we approved one. We gave two negative determinations and a certificate of compliance, so, um.
I got them, I got that, I got the note written down on my minutes.
Okay, so here is.
So Charlie can take care of it.
Okay, so here is, um, okay, we need one here, and this is for, for, um, Madison Homes.
That's an notice of intent.
Madison Homes.
Order of conditions on that.
Madison Homes, okay. Okay, Madison Homes only. Okay. Let's see what we need here now, we need, um, where's this one? Order of conditions. Now, it's an order of conditions, right?
Order of conditions for Madison.
Yeah.
Uh, Sonstrom is a negative determination.
Okay, I gotta, I gotta run up, uh, extra paperwork here, uh, for, for those two, for signatures. And then Charlie can do that, uh, and I will, uh.
We gotta make sure that these guys don't leave, because we don't have the code to them. Reset the alarm. So, the guys know, press.
Okay. Let's see, so this is. Okay, one is Stonestrom. And two is, who's the other one?
Historical Society.
Historical Society. Okay. Two of them there. Now, you gotta sign on.
So, with Jim?
Bill, sign up, you two.
Um, did we do an order of conditions?
Order of conditions for Madison, that's here, that's done already, I got that here.
Okay, what's, wait, what's this here, then? What, what pages do we have, what page do you have signed there? Did we do the right? Charlie, you got three here. Let me see which.
These are the, the RDAs.
Oh, yeah, that's determination of applicability. Um, okay.
You've got Madison Homes over there?
Madison Homes.
Oh, here it is right here, here's Madison.
You said Denise.
De, oh, yeah, oh, I got the, okay. Um, that's a determination of applicability, okay, we got more than what we need here. Um, here's. Okay. Okay, I had, I did that because I put him under, um, RDA, and this is an order of conditions. Okay. Now, we need a certificate of compliance.
For saying highway.
Yeah, we don't, I, he, Charlie didn't give us one, let me go get one.
You watched a game Sunday? Watched a game Sunday?
Yeah.
I had a whole bunch of people over, the wife cooked all kinds of stuff, wings and, she's all kind, everybody went home at lunch, and at halftime.
Halftime.
Yeah, everybody's feeling sad, and, constantly even going down the way road, like, at, at halftime, everybody was leaving.
My way.
Didn't expect it to end like that.
Okay, uh. Okay. Uh, Charlie, he's got the other papers in his computer that he can run on.
Yeah.
Uh, so he can, uh, take care of all of that.
Sorry.
Okay, and then, and then when you're finished, we got one more item here to deal with.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Uh, Jim, did I, I sent this down to you, right?
Um, yes.
The enforcement order? Okay, if you.
Did, did Jim sign it?
No, no, not yet, um, I, we got, we, we have to vote on it first, but I, I wanna show you, uh, pictures of, of what I took here. Uh, Jim and I were down there about a year ago, when there was a, uh, there was a problem pri- prior to this fellow moving in, or just at the time of he was moving in. Um, okay, that's the woman, uh, the owner's mother, uh, hollering out the window or the doorway, asking me if there's any problem, and I says, yeah, everything was wrong. Um, and, well, anyway, um, there's the grub, grubbing device, and that is, that picture was taken. Okay, where is it here? Okay. That picture was taken as the machine was in here, this entire area, this entire area is wiped clean of vegetation. Right to the water. The only thing that wasn't, uh, wiped out was the tall grass, which is right here, where, if he had tried to get in there, he, he would've been in the, in the river itself. Uh, but he wiped out everything except for a few trees. Uh, all the brush, all the breeding grounds for, everything is gone, there isn't a thing left. And, uh, um, that, that equipment just, is just, that thing was just.
You ever see one of them work? Yeah, I'm sure you have.
Those things, those things were just humming, and he just left a few small trees, yeah, in between.
Well, what he, what he left was stuff that he couldn't knock down.
He couldn't knock down, there you go. Uh, and these here are barriers, now, this is the roadway, uh, in this map, uh, it is, okay, this, that's this right here, this is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts property, it's there, it's the old railroad bed, they own it, and they've got it barricaded so people cannot, uh, cross through. Now, is that our jurisdiction? Nah, not really, but I wanna put it that he has to remove it, and then let DEP see our, um, uh, order, and then let them act upon state property. That, what, what he has done, barriers preventing access to, uh, state property.
Well, that, that, you know, our, our concern is, is what he did with that machine down along the river, Jim.
Wiped out, there, there isn't.
Let's concentrate, let's just concentrate on that, on the enforcement order. Don't, don't do anything about the barrier.
Okay, I'm sorry, where are we? Okay, well, I think you saw it all anyway.
Yeah.
Now, okay, so, when, um, when I went, when I saw it, um, the fellow, uh, he, don't take pictures, you can't take pictures, yes, I can, I says, uh, so I thought he was the owner, but he wasn't the owner. I don't, uh, he told me his name, he gave me his first name, and, and, uh, but, but the owner is Dennis Duatt. And he, um, uh, like I say, I thought that was him, so I, so I accessed and talked to him. And then, so as we walked up to the house, that's when, uh, a woman came out of the house, and it turned out that it was, uh, Mr. Duatt's mother, and, um, uh, she did not like me being there, and, uh, asked me to leave the property, and I said, I would be, I would be coming back with the police. So I came to Town Hall, I got all the information I needed, I filled out the enforcement order for the destruction of, of that entire area of vegetation. I called, um, DEP, and I was put in touch with a officer, Malali, and he was in Swansea at the time, he was here within twenty minutes, and we went to the site. And when we got there, um, um, Mrs. Duatt, I'll call her Mrs. Duatt, uh, since it's the owner's mother, came, uh, came out and, uh, didn't want me on the property, and, and, uh, so I'm explaining to the officer, and within, within minutes, he had the local police there as well. So, I had this, the original that I made up, uh, issued to the Duatts. He initialed it, okay, Officer Malali initialed it, and I left. Okay? So, what we have to do tonight is act upon it, uh, what we want to have done, um, with the, um, property. And, and I see it that, uh, that we have to have them come with a plan for, uh.
Restoration.
Restoration, and this plan, uh, for the future, cannot include any cutting, any, any chemical.
We'll do that when we need to.
Okay.
Let's, let's vote on the, on whether or not we need to do enforcement order, and issue an enforcement order.
Okay. Uh, I make the motion that we issue, we formally issue an enforcement order to Dennis Duatt of seven thirty-one Somerset Avenue for the destruction of all vegetation on the riverbank area of said property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's get that done.
Okay. Um, I have, um, let's see, is this the, uh?
You wanna just attach a black one?
Well, this is what I, this is what, this is what I wanna do, I'm gonna, we're gonna sign this here, we'll give it to Charlie, and whether Charlie types all this up, or how, um, and we, I can write down, um, other bits of information here. Uh, I, I can give, I don't wanna give him this one here, I give him a, another copy, because I think that, um, uh, this here, uh, should, should stay in the file. Uh, we should put that in a, sign a new file, okay? I have a copy here, uh, of this.
Okay.
And, uh, we can give this to Charlie.
Yeah, that, that's a copy, it doesn't have this guy's initials on it.
Correct. Correct.
Why's that?
Because I did, I can make copies of that right now if you want.
Well, I think it's important.
Okay, let's do that then, and then I move, I can do that right now. Okay, and I will just make, make a note on it separate, saying that this is Officer Mulaney, DEP, uh, police.
Not DEP?
Environmental.
Environmental police. Environmental police. Okay, let's see. Okay. Um, okay, where's my, here's my other copies. Okay, where's my, here's my other copies. I can, I can take this...
Is that the one you want to sign?
No. I, I got extras up here on that. I, I ran off, uh, extras from... Okay, I'm gonna, I'll give, um, Charlie this one here. Okay, so I can give Charlie this here. We have the enforcement order here, it's, uh, we give my, there are signatures. Wait, this is a peel signature. Okay, all right. That is the correct, that is the correct one to sign, isn't it? Just check it out to make sure. All right.
Where's the copy you wanna hold with this?
Um... This one here. And, um, let's see, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do additional, uh, photos for this here. I'm gonna get Char-, I'm gonna get Charlie these, this map, though.
Okay.
It's not like he didn't know what he was doing.
Yeah. We've been there before.
You know, I had talked to, Char-, Charlie had called me, and he, and Charlie had talked to me, um, and said that, he said, "Well, can I have, make it, you know, go out of the river?" And Charlie says, "Yeah, you could do a hand path to the, to cut it by hand, a path to the river." Charlie didn't know they had already wiped out the whole area. So, so Charlie says, "Make a little path, so you can walk to the river," and he grub, and grubs the whole thing out. Okay, let's see. This entire area here. And, uh, I should, uh, okay, we should probably, oh, we should probably get this too then, Charlie, the original, or should we leave it here?
We should, we're gonna have to have a folder on this fellow.
So, I should, I should probably start a new folder on, on this. And I'll just put this in the file. Okay. We're probably done.
We have to approve Charlie as a website representative for the commission?
Um, yes. Okay, that's number one, right, on, on there? I thought we did that, no?
Nope.
What, what, what?
I move that we approve Charles Mello, uh, as commission clerk for the website representative.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, poor Charlie. We got him again.
Okay. Okay, what I'm going to do then is, um...
Close the hearing.
Okay, I move that we close the meeting.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, gentlemen.
Tell them they can't leave us, Jim. We don't know how to program the alarm.